Good afternoon, all. I'd like to welcome you to the October 26 meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, and I ask you to join with us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I would ask for a moment of silence to remember troops who served not only here, but also abroad in Afghanistan and Iraq, and for those who have lost their lives. Thank you very much. Is there any further comment?
Should I make my comment now?
Sheila.
If I had any other comments. So you're going to have Bob Troy, then we're going to be... We don't have reports from commissioners?
Yeah, we'll have a report from commissioners after we finish with our agenda.
Okay.
I thought maybe we could just start with a summary of actions and hope that Sheila will be along. I'm sure she will. She hasn't said she wasn't coming.
And I've looked at these, and they appear to be routine. I see nothing that they have questions on. So I'd like to move them.
Okay. And last second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Two in favor, motion carries.
Yes, we should start signing.
Okay. Yes. And this afternoon, we originally had on our agenda a discussion of pending litigation for executive session. And in consultation with our county council, it's been determined that because it is not litigation, that it's not appropriate for executive session, so we're going to discuss it in open session. And in terms of framing the issue, I know there have been certain actions that have been taken in the past few days in terms of hiring counsel. And what I'd like to do is, we will have to address those, obviously, but what I'd like to do now is talk about our plan of going forward. We know where we are now, and I think that Bob can work with us and we can develop and strategize about how, as county commissioners, on the county end of things, how we are going to move forward with this wastewater issue. So Bob, I would turn it over to you.
Right. Thank you. I think that a prospective analysis is helpful. And looking forward, I would suggest that the lessons of what we have learned cement my contention and my belief that the county has to act decisively to make it clear to all departments, including the Cape Cod Commission, that the county commissioners formulate the policy for the county. Now, in this particular case, what we have seen transpire is this: Regardless of the circumstances, a law firm believed that it was authorized to contact a potentially adverse party and, in a five-page document, set forth certain positions. One of the most alarming aspects of that notice is this: The county is now on record as suggesting, and I'm going to read a sentence from the October 22, 2010 correspondence from Anderson and Krieger. It says, "Therefore, the county and the Cape Cod Commission are exploring ways to be involved in either or both lawsuits in some capacity, such as intermediaries, to help ensure that any litigation outcome is reasonable and workable for Cape Cod." Now, I have no problem with that if that was a decision of the county commissioners. But if the county commissioners have not made that decision, we need to make sure that prospectively, any person who is speaking on behalf of the county understands that policy is set by the county commissioners and not by lawyers or consultants who are hired by the county. Now, I think one of the things that I would like to bring your attention is that I think that the October 22nd communication from Anderson and Krieger approximately mirrors my conclusion that there is no lawsuit pending and that the county does not appear to have any liability. As a matter of fact, I would characterize the basis of any lawsuit against Barnstable County as quixotic. It is unclear what possible liability the county would have. And I have given you my opinion, and now you have a second opinion from Anderson and Krieger. The question then for the county commissioners would be, if you have a case where there is no lawsuit and you have a situation where your lawyers that you have hired are telling you that there is no liability, why would you possibly want to take public money and intervene in the lawsuit? It, to me, is a proposition which you need to decide. And that's what I think is the key issue at this point. Whatever's happened is behind us. You now need to make a decision as to what policy you want the lawyers and the other representatives of the county to follow. And that would be my suggestion.
Well, I think it's obvious that we have been strategizing regarding this notice of intent to file a suit from the Conservation Law Foundation and the Coalition for Buzz It's Fair. And we have been working with Paul Nitzwicky, and we've been working with Andrew Gottlieb on this. And we have talked about a lot of different options that we might have, and being aware all the while that it is a notice of intent and it is not a lawsuit. But we also have great concerns about our regional responsibility to work with the towns and support them in their efforts to develop wastewater plants, not only for the towns individually, but for the towns who share watersheds, which is the whole regional component to it. So we have been having those discussions all along, and we have talked about hiring But we never actually came to a decision because hiring counsel is a very public process, as we know. That it requires investigation, it requires communication with our own counsel and involvement of our counsel, and it also requires a public vote, an open session, by the county commissioners to do that. It requires a budget, an estimated budget of services, and it requires probably a supplemental appropriation from the Assembly of Delegates in order to have those funds approved for that purpose. So those are actions that have not been taken at that point, and we have not yet even determined that that is where we need to go. So, and it's just unfortunate that it's at this stage, but I think you always learn something. When we overreach on something and then we pull back, we always learn something from it. And I think your guidance on this is very helpful, that we clearly need, as towns do. Towns have to clearly establish what the rules are for hiring counsel. I mean, any department head just can't go out and hire counsel. So I think it's appropriate that we develop that policy in a way that's workable, that's acceptable to us, and that gives the commissioners some oversight over the activities of counsel. Yes?
I have a question to keep back to counsel. I don't have it in front of me. Just correct me if I'm wrong. Isn't that policy outlined in the Charter and the Administrative Code on that issue?
And that's a very good question, and one that I previously have suggested, and I'm going to suggest again, that I think the Administrative Code needs to be tightened up. The county policy is not similar to the policy that is in effect in most towns. And in fairness to the factual situation that you're facing, there is support in the Administrative Code for what has happened, because the Administrative Code does provide that staff with the authorization of the county commissioners may hire counsel. And it could be that that's exactly what happened here, that staff believed that they had that authorization and then went ahead and hired counsel. I think that part of the Administrative Code needs to be tightened up. I think the county commissioners need to have the ultimate decision and exclusive decision about when counsel is hired. And I think the procedure generally is that a... And counsel and special counsel is appropriated in a number of circumstances. A department head's come and they say, "This is a specialized area," and we request permission to hire a person. Many times, as you know, counsel is excluded from the requirements of procurement, but nonetheless, there should be some type of public process in which, as you have said, Pat, that there is a review and there is an analysis of what the terms are and what the terms of engagement are.
Bill?
I'd like to say that I support the position that we provide some intervening, the involvement, because I believe that we have an obligation to the towns that we have said over a period of time in the creation of the Wastewater Collaborative that we were trying to carry on what we saw as our obligation to move this whole process forward. At the same time, I believe that, from what I'm hearing from counsel, that it would be appropriate that we, what I'd call, make an amendment to the Administrative Code that speaks to the suggestions that have been made to provide some clarity to this process. And I would suggest that we ask counsel to draft an ordinance to that effect that we, in turn, would then submit to the usual ordinance process. And in that way, we will have demonstrated, in my opinion, that we have, let's see, responded to the lesson that this situation has given us. At the same time, I believe that both our counsel and the counsel who have been hired are uniform in something that I completely agree with, which is, there's no need of going forward. We've done what we've clearly identified through the opinion of counsel, that we have no position in any of this, and that if we go forward, it is on the basis of providing some oversight for the... So I think that we're in a position now where we would thank counsel for what they've done, and then just wait to see what happens. Because at this time, we have no evidence that we are going to be sued. All we know is that something has filed for a 60-day notice. The 22nd of October, I believe, was the day, the last day of that time. Monday has come and gone, and there has been no evidence of any submission. So therefore, I think that if we were to go, if you would accept my suggestion, we'd ask counsel to draft an ordinance, we would then review and submit.
Okay. We have two things here. The one is the ordinance, but the other is the issue of where we go from here. So let's separate that.
Right.
Because we don't want to talk about that while we have the motion on the floor. So the motion is to ask counsel to draft an amendment to the ordinance, and then we can deal with the second part.
To the Administrative Code.
I mean, to the Administrative Code.
For us to review and then discuss and...
Yeah, and then we'll talk about the second part. Do you want to say?
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? In favor, motion carries.
On the intervening issue...
On the... Yes.
If I could just add, I mean, I believe that when this first was presented to us, this letter naming that we were possible candidates to be sued, in our discussion, that we felt that we were best to address it before we were sued. And that was why we were seeking outside counsel to guide us in that response, because it really doesn't do you much good to go out and get the batteries for a pending storm when the storm is on your house. So I think that that is where we were. It was really just as a response to the letter so that we could show, not only, I mean, we could fulfill our regional responsibility, that we are addressing this issue. Since we were named, we were going to respond in a letter, whether we were sued or not, just to clarify what it is we have done, what we are intending to do, and where we are going. And that was the reason for that counsel. And I think that we gave the impression that that was the direction we were going in, and then we sought advice on who it would be, and then we got clarity on that. So I think that, if anything, this is really maybe semantics and a miscommunication or formality that did not take place, where we actually did sit and say, "Is this where we're going?" And we'd taken an official vote on it. But I think that up until it was put into question, that we were in a position where we were going to address this so that it wouldn't become bigger and maybe not necessarily to stave off being sued at all, to state our case, "This is where we are, and this is what we're doing." So, and that was the intention of seeking outside counsel in the first place. And I don't think that it's always prudent to wait until you're sued to then figure out what it is that we should do. And that was, I think, doing our due diligence and fulfilling our responsibility, and I stay by it.
Well, that was part of our strategic discussions, was the fact that you don't wait to be sued until you move forward and get advice. We just never completed the process. We were still...
As far as the vote.
Well, as far as getting all the final information that we needed in order to make a determination as to who might be that particular law firm. So that's...
I believe that we were at fault in not making it clear as to what we wanted. And I think that going forward, I think the lesson to be learned is that we owe to staff a responsibility to be crystal clear on what's going to happen.
That's right.
And I think the key point that has been said here is that you had certain objectives, and that was to have a response to the Conservation Law Firm and the other entity, the Coalition. And that has been done. There's a five-page letter which essentially, I thought very persuasively establishes that there is no liability on the part of either the county or the Cape Cod Commission, and that the liability, if any, rests with the state. And so hopefully that the October 22, 2010 response will be the end of the matter, except to the extent that you decide you want to, you know, participate on some type of basis.
The other thing that we took into consideration, if I can just add, is that if we are going forward, it was, you know, since we are going to be expending public funds, that it was more prudent to do so in partnership with the Cape Cod Commission, up until a point where we felt if there was a conflict in our interests, then we would separate that. But up until where we stood and where this situation was, that it was prudent for us to go forward in this, to have that response and to consolidate those funds and not to be just having two separate law firms, two separate responses, two separate, you know, bills to pay. The other point is that if the Cape Cod Commission hires a separate counsel than what we hire, then there's very little interaction we can have as far as the Wastewater Collaborative with what is the focus of the Cape Cod Commission's strategy. So this way, we could go in tandem up into a certain point until we felt that it wasn't serving both our interests.
And if I might respond on that, because at the beginning of the meeting, I did address that issue. It's my opinion that the... It's my opinion, looking at the Act that created the Cape Cod Commission as well as the Charter, the Cape Cod Commission and the county are not equal parties. Cape Cod Commission is a subordinate department of the county. It has some autonomy. It does not have, it does not have, and never has had, in my opinion, the right to hire counsel. The Cape Cod Commission, if you look at the Administrative Code and you look at the Act itself as well as the Charter, it's very clear that the central policymaking mechanism of Barnstable County, including the Cape Cod Commission, is the county commissioners. The county commission has set the policy. And so to that extent, I think that if the county commissioners, as part of their setting policy, believes that it's prudent to work in tandem with the commission, then I think that's appropriate. But that's the county commissioners' responsibility. I have, in my memorandum of October 12th, it is my opinion that the county should not be in tandem with the Cape Cod Commission on issues such as this for a variety of reasons, but most specifically because the county does act as, and I analyzed this in my memorandum, acts as a regional agency that has a very different relationship with the towns than the Cape Cod Commission. But once again, that's your decision. However the county commissioners decide, it is to work. That is, in my view, binding on all departments and on all county employees.
And I think one of the things that comes out of this is that in the article in the paper, the reference to keeping the Executive Committee of the Cape Cod Commission advised as the authority to go forward is something that is not allowed by the existing policy that we have with regard to the litigation committee that has been set up to review matters before we engage counsel. And since that piece was not there, I think that that's one of the reasons why we have to be crystal clear going forward as to what our expectation is.
Any other comments?
No.
Well, why don't we go into reports then? Because I think Andy is coming at 12:30.
Right. Of executive session.
Nope. It'll all be an open session.
Okay.
So let's have a fourth spell. Do you have any?
Yeah, I have several points. I went to a Farm Bureau meeting. I don't know if I reported this last time, but I was happy to report that we had a lottery for housing in Harwich. It's ongoing.
They want to just stay?
Yeah, you should probably stay.
They have power. Yeah. I think it would be helpful.
There was a forum on suicide prevention in Harwich last night. It was quite well-attended. And I want to point out to folks that if they were to go on to the whitehouse.gov blog, they would see a message from President Obama, which is wonderful, because it speaks to the issue that they were talking about last night, that we need people to speak up on this issue. And he spoke to his own involvement with depression as an adult. It was quite touching. The No Place for Hate Committee met in Barnstable yesterday afternoon, and we had some discussion about hate speech. Apparently, there's been an event in Centerville and then in Osterville where people are collecting signatures to impeach President Obama, but they're using a picture, a face picture of the president with a Hitler mustache. And we're quite upset about that, and we want the public to know that although there's a right to freedom of expression, that freedom of expression is limited to opinions about ability, attitude, and activity. It should not be directed in an ad hominem way to a person. And there's also more movement on the relationship of substance abuse to some of the activities. There was a meeting, a forum on power and aging at the Cape and Islands Community Action Council, where we discussed public transportation issues. That was also on Friday. And at that, the RTA has announced that they've added several buses, and they are changing the name of B-Bus to the Dylawide Transportation Network to allow more flexibility in route transportation. And there was an immigrant forum at the Cape and Islands Workforce Board on Friday as well, discussing specifically the problems of illegal immigrants in the restaurant and tourist industry here in the Cape. And one of the points that was made, which I think was a very useful point, is that in order to improve customer service when we are using immigrants who, English is not a first language, that perhaps we should spend some time and attention to training the supervisors in the language of their employees. And that way, that might facilitate, I'll say, a lot of the customer service issues that come up because people have some, they get upset if they're talking to somebody and they're not speaking, not talking to somebody who can speak English. But yet, we need more help in that particular area for our people and the service industries. So that's what...
We can hold off on other reports, because Dylan and Andy are probably not all that interested. Where we've been for the last couple of weeks...
You know, Larry Ballantyne, some of them, they've been...
Anyway, but when we convened at noon, we talked about the wastewater issues that once addressed, the issues that we're looking at right now, which is in terms of counsel. And what we want to do is figure out how we're going to move forward on this, not so much looking backward. But Bob Troy did suggest to us that our Administrative Code is not very clear, and that we should probably have an amendment to the Administrative Code in terms of how counsel is hired, particularly at the county, at the county commissioners' level. So we voted to ask him to do that, so that it becomes very clear for everybody here how that actually works. And I think, I thought that the information provided in the letters, both from, or the comments from Donna McLeod and Fish from Attorney Leon, and also in the letter from Attorney Leahy, were really right on. And I thought they were extremely helpful. And I think what we need to do now is to strategize on where do we go from here? How are we going to move forward? And because I believe that the collaborative is just vital, the wastewater, the Water Protection Collaborative is really vital to us moving forward on these issues. I think they've done a great job, and I think Andy Gottlieb has done a great job as our consultant in working with them. The commission on the regional end of things, I haven't seen your program yet, but I'm anxious to see it, because I think that working together, they're relevant and essential to us in moving the regional issues related to wastewater. I was just saying to them, I was at two wastewater meetings last night, both the Falmouth Comprehensive Review Committee and the Climate Action Team that put on a whole forum on alternatives, which everyone seems interested because of the lower cost to using alternatives rather than big pipes. So I think what we need is to really now take a look at and strategize on moving forward.
If I have...
Well, keep something...
I wanted to mention that Larry Ballantyne was kind enough to call me and speak in support of things that have gone on. And he was speaking for the Wastewater Collaborative. He made the point that he's glad that we have, going forward, to take some action to give evidence that we are concerned about the issue, and that going forward, we would be indeed involved at some level to represent the interest of the towns. So I wanted to mention that, especially to Andrew, that he had stepped forward and told us about that.
And I also just want to reiterate Attorney Troy's comments that we are within our own, we are within the power of hiring and directing staff to hire counsel if we so choose, which is the tact that we were on. And there was another point that I just wanted to make, but there was that point that even though there's going to be an amendment, doesn't mean that anything that we have done so far is not within our realm.
So who wants to speak first? Paul? Andy?
Well, I'm a little bit in the dark, because I have no idea what this amendment says or what's being suggested.
Well, it hasn't been written.
Yep.
Bob? Bob, did you want to speak to what might be a part of this amendment?
Right.
Or what he would like to point out?
What I've suggested, and it is, and the county commissioners have voted, is to look at section 2.4 to clarify it, because I think part of the, the problem, to the extent there's a problem, is generated by the ambiguity of the current section. As you know, the current section says, in section A, this is section 2.4 of the administrative code, retention of general or special counsel by a department head or employee is prohibited unless authorized by the Board of County Commissioners, Board of County Administrator. Then in section C, it says, in special circumstances, the Board of County Commissioners may also authorize department heads to employ special counsel. Department head shall provide the Board of County Commissioners with estimated cost for legal services and with detailed summaries on quarterly basis of the use and cost of legal services. And then finally, in section D, it says, nothing in this section shall limit the authority of the Assembly of Delegates from utilizing the services of county counsel or employing separate counsel. So I think that what we need to do is we need to have language which indicates that the county commissioners have control, exclusive control, over the decision to employ counsel, and the process has to be made clear. And I think, as written, it is somewhat contradictory, and it clearly is ambiguous.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's probably worth looking at it, although I'd probably go in the other direction. I think at, at times, the ambiguity sort of stands in contradiction of the Cape Cod Commission Act. I mean, clearly, the act of sort of hiring and being represented by counsel depends on, on the interpretation of that act. And if the county commissioners can stop that, then in a way, you are interpreting the Cape Cod Commission Act by prohibiting us to go forward as, as we see fit to protect the interests of the commission and to do our statutory, the, the job that we've been given statutorily. Especially on the, on the timing of the hiring of counsel, that seems to be, I think we really do need to clarify that. Because until yesterday, I was pretty clear that the Cape Cod Commission's interest and the county's interest on this were the same. I'm not as convinced today. I mean, I wake up to read the Cape Cod Times to, to understand that the county council has prepared a memo for the county commissioners to this fact that I haven't seen. You know, I shouldn't have to read in, in the newspaper about a memo between, that involves the Cape Cod Commission. I would see it just as a professional courtesy. And so I think we really sort of probably need to sort of sit down and hash this out because I, I disagreed with sort of the, the, the fact that you, you know, we have met in this risk management group so that we are not in any way acting in a way that's going to incur liability to the county. Absolutely. But I don't, I don't believe in, in expansive definition that says that we would be prohibited from protecting ourselves and the commission doing our statutory authority or to give the county commissioners any, any ability to do that.
Yeah, let me respond to that. I think, I agree. I think it needs to be clarified. But what needs to be made clear is it's not a matter of my interpretation or Paul's. The law of the county is the administrative code. And as the administrative code is written today, the only entity that is authorized to employ counsel in the county is the Assembly of Delegates. That's in section D. This is why I'm saying this needs to be clarified. And you may be able to make a case to the Assembly that they are in agreement with and to the commissions, that the Cape Cod Commission should also have that authority. But as is written, Cape Cod Commission has no authority to hire counsel. And as I've said before, and I want to make it very clear, it's my opinion that the county charter, it's very, very clear reading the county charter and the Cape Cod Commission Act, that the Cape Cod Commission is a subdivision of the county. It is not an independent partner, it is not an equal partner, and it most certainly is not a, a partner that has superior responsibilities. It is a subordinate agency under the jurisdiction of Barnstable County. And so what I am suggesting that's very clear is that you function presently at the behest and, and, and subject to the approval of the county commissioners.
Yeah.
And I just want to add one other thing, if I could. The October 12th memo that I sent specifically excluded any reference to the authority of the Cape Cod Commission. I, my, my memorandum dealt only with the county. And if you look at the memorandum, very clearly it says that we leave to the commission's counsel its interpretation as to what the impact. But I, it rendered my opinion to the county, that all the county commissioners received it, and so did the Assembly delegates. So I don't, you know, I don't understand what your problem is because clearly, the commission is able to have, you have in-house counsel available to you, and I assume that you rely on her judgment as to.
We have in-house counsel, Bob, and we have outside counsel too that's already been designated. And there's no difference between using Eric Wadlinger or using Anderson and Krieger.
As long as the county commission is approving. That's, that's the difference.
But I just, you know, the Cape Cod Commission Act gives us independent standing to sue or be sued. How can we have that sort of standing but have no right to actually hire counsel?
The Cape Cod Commission Act does not give you any authority to hire counsel.
I disagree.
Well, if you show me that sentence, I'd like to see it, but it's not, it's not.
I think it's implied, and if we can't agree with this, if, if we can't agree on this today, we'll take it to the Assembly.
We don't need to agree on this.
But you're going to bring it through the Assembly of Delegates, a legislative body with a weighted vote up there. And if there's a disagreement there, it's going to go to Superior Court.
Look, hold on just a minute. We're not going to agree to anything today. What we asked Bob to do was to provide us with revised ordinance on that. That, we will work with you on it, we will work with whatever governing laws there are, and we'll work it out. You know, we're not trying to take any powers away from you or the Cape Cod Commission. What we want to do is amend a, a piece of the administrative code that is unclear. We want to make it more clear. That doesn't necessarily mean it gets changed. It just means that it's written up in a way that is very clear to everyone regarding the hiring of counsel.
And I think that that's still, we have given them the authority to write up an amendment, but it doesn't mean that we have approved it or that we feel that this is what's going forward. I mean, that was my caveat. There is no amendment to even discuss at this point.
I still have a concern about reading about a memo in the Cape Cod Times that was, that I didn't see prior to that.
Okay. Bob, your point's taken. Andy?
You know, we have talked numerous times about the process we were going to utilize to engage counsel, and I believe, you know, have followed that. So in terms of, you know, from your perspective of moving forward, recommendation today is what it was a couple of weeks ago, which is to proceed with the designation of Anderson Krieger as special counsel to represent the county in this potential litigation. And that's, you know, provided you with, you know, the profiles of all the attorneys in the firm involved and, yesterday and.
Oh, yesterday. Okay. How about, how about rates, fees?
It was on, so two attachments, two attachments that I sent.
The rates of the individual attorneys that were assigned are clearly stated in that letter.
Right.
And, and I believe that everything that's in there is in line with the recommendations that have been made. I see, you know, I see no reason, if we go forward, that we don't, we do have a solid recommendation. And at that time, I would feel comfortable in making a recommendation to support it, but I don't believe we have to make that at this time.
We can't make it today because it's not on our agenda for today. So we'll have to set it on the agenda for next week.
But in any case, going forward, I think that the time to make a direct commitment, we have an understanding, I believe. You know, it becomes more of a quasi-contract than, you know, than an actual, than an actual contractual arrangement. And I don't believe that anything would change that. But the question becomes, if we have to formalize the process, I think we have to decide how we are going to formalize the process for this particular action going forward. And I believe you suggested you'd make it an agenda item, and that would figure it out.
Okay. And if I can just state that we, we basically did state, as we started out on this, that we were going to give a response, that we were hiring counsel before any lawsuit came our way, so that we could draft that response and respond to it. And that was the reason of hiring counsel now, not waiting until we got a letter saying that we were being sued.
That's right.
And that is why we asked Paul and Andy to, to go forward, to, to check out what counsel they felt was appropriate, what special counsel. They came to us with that recommendation, and we were moving forward. And I can see where the assumption was that they were then to go to the next step, which is what I thought we were doing as well.
I don't have any disagreement with what you said up to this point. I think the next step was to get the information, which we received yesterday, related to the fees, so that we had something in front of us to know what the budget is. Because we also have to determine if, if we need a supplemental appropriation to do that, and that requires an ordinance from the Assembly. So you need to, all the pieces have to come together before we actually put it on the table and ask for a vote.
But I do also.
And we have not reached that point yet, but we can now that we have.
But in that first meeting that we had, Mark was there, and we did discuss costs and what we had in reserves and what the Cape Cod Commission had. And we did feel that we had the appropriate amounts of money to go forward to this step to address this level.
Well, but we didn't have the fees at that point, so we didn't know what the costs were.
But we knew what we had.
Well, I think, you know, I'm confused, because I think you either engage counsel or you don't engage counsel. I think whatever issues of confusion we have thus far, you know, stem from the fact that, you know, Bill said we have an understanding, but we don't really have a contract. You know, I'm not quite sure what to do with that. You know, we've, you know, we've.
I can, I can speak to that. I think that we have an obligation to pay, you know, to pay the bills for what he's done so far, because he has done work for the county. And, and I believe that we're all in agreement that the work that's been done is useful, you know, in process. But we still need a formal vote of the three of us to accept them.
I thought that's what we were doing today.
And then we said.
No, we can't do it today because it's not, it's not on the agenda. And under the open meeting law, we don't have, it's not an emergency situation, so we don't have the, we don't have the authority and with that, the ability to go, let's say, to go forward. We'll do it next week. We'll be on the agenda next week.
Well, we have to get the information and put it together in front of us. We have it in an email, you know? And we, it, because we don't even know yet. I don't know. Maybe your email did. I haven't read your email, to be honest with you, because, and I don't have the phone with me, because I left it at home. But we need to know what the estimated budget is going to be, because Mark will have to tell us whether or not we have the resources to pay for this out of our current budget, or if we have to go to the Assembly for a supplemental budget. We don't know that yet. So, in other words, there's a process for doing this. There is a public process for us to hire counsel. We haven't completed that process yet. We're in the information gathering stage.
Well, I think, you know, I needed articulated for me what the target is I'm trying to hit here, because it's unclear to me what you need in order to feel comfortable taking up or down vote on, on these representatives or anyone else or on representation at all.
We need the information on the forms, which apparently is in that email.
You have.
We need what the proposed fees are. We need a proposed budget. We need a clarification from Mark that there is, are sufficient funds in the budget to do that. We can't vote something if we don't know what the cost is going to be. And then if it requires a supplemental appropriation, we have to get that from the Assembly. That's what we need to make this happen. And we can, we can do that by next week.
Well, you won't have an appro, if you need a supplemental, you won't have it by next week.
No, but we don't need.
We know that we have a reserve.
Right. That has already been discussed.
There are reserve funds that, you know, that are available, that, you know, that we, that we could then allocate, you know, for this purpose. The public process, in my opinion, demands that we, that we know going in or have some estimate as to what, as to, as to what, you know, we're, we're facing. And at each point, any, any business decision, you just don't go into it and just say, okay, we're going to go into this and, and have no concern about what the potential exposure we would have.
And then the final step in the process is to have a letter of engagement from the county to the law firm, indicating that we are engaging them to provide this service for this amount or whatever, whatever other pieces to that letter of engagement. They provide, I think, a letter of engagement. But we have to respond, that we, and we're doing the hiring. They're not hiring us, we're hiring them. So we have to send a letter of engagement to them. And that then makes it a final process of hiring the firm.
There's nothing in.
Yeah, it's not rocket science. You just got to get the pieces together.
Nothing in what we've said is intention that, you know, that we're not supportive of doing it. We just have to meet the letter, you know, of the, let's see, of the, of the requirements that are placed in front of us. Otherwise, we're, you know, we can be accused of, let's see, of not meeting our fiduciary responsibility as, you know, as, let's say, as public officials. And, and, and let's not forget that the changes in the open meeting law put a requirement on process, and we're trying to meet that.
Any, any further discussion? No?
No, other than I think that the process for the county is different than the process for the commission. I think there's a ton of new information that unfortunately I've received really in the last five minutes. And so I'm going to have to take this back and have a discussion with the executive committee. And so I think the issue between commission and the county goes beyond the hiring of Anderson Krieger at this point. So I, I can't say at this point where the commission is in relation to, to going forward in a joint capacity with Sue.
Are you succeeding from the commission?
No, I'm saying that there are serious issues here. This certainly hasn't been past practice, Bill. All of a sudden, it's a new thing. We've got a $3 billion project out there. We have the, if we do this right, we can protect hundreds of millions of dollars to cost the taxpayers, and we're caught in the weeds on this thing about hiring counsel.
We're not caught in any weeds. The whole point is.
This is different than past practice, Bill.
If, if, if I believed that there was some communication for what you were doing to us, I would be in a lot better, a lot better position of being more supportive. We probably would have facilitated this.
I would like to respond to that directly, in that the day that we found out that there, there was a notice filed of intent to sue the Cape Cod Commission and the county, we met with the county commissioners, and we informed you of the notice of intent, of all the information that we had and how we were going to proceed, which included a, a representation at the time, that we were going to need someone with Clean Water Act experience going forward to advise us, not only in litigation, but on how to respond, and if to respond to a notice of intent in a, a Clean Water Act case. We've met subsequently, Andy, and Andy was not in that meeting when we first met. I was there with two other lawyers from the commission. We met subsequently in front of the three of you, and we talked about a process for interviewing counsel that we were going to hire. And it, it seemed like a lot of that, and we, as I specifically remember saying, do you want a short list to pick from? And the answer was no. You come back with one person, specifics or whatever.
Come back with the one person, which.
Subsequent to that, Andy had a meeting with the three of you. I was not at that meeting. So I think that I have met certainly my burden of keeping you informed at every instant and every decision-making moment. Conversely, I haven't been informed about some of the information you've received related to the, to the lawsuit. That's what concerns me. This is, you know, this is a bit of a one-way street. I mean, I've, I've always come in to share this with you. You're receiving information that you're not sharing, sharing with me.
Are you talking about the memo from Bob Troy?
Yeah, very specific.
Well, he's already said that it didn't have anything to do with the commission.
Well, I was going to.
Not that you, it isn't.
I'm sure the Cape Cod Commission has mentioned it.
Wait a minute, one person at a time.
I believe the Cape Cod Commission is mentioned in the memo.
Okay. All right.
I think we learned something. I think we learned something here. Okay, I, I don't think that, you know, that tomorrow or, you know, a week from now, that we're not, you know, that we're not interested in the same thing. I think there's been, there's been a certain level of misunderstanding, and I think this could be fairly easily resolved. But the most important thing is that it apparently needs to be a better, let's say, a better line of communication between us. It's my problem in that I have not understood clearly what has been going on, because if I did, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be raising these questions now. But now that I see that I have some responsibility of following this up, I will.
Okay. Andy?
I just want to raise one other thing, because I think, you know, we have a compelling interest in resolving this quickly. And if next Wednesday is going to be the day when you have a chance to review all the cost information about information alike, so be it. You know, I don't want this to come up next Wednesday, because, you know, in the last 24 hours, there've been issues raised about potential conflict that some people perceive that I may have with the choice of Anderson Krieger. I want to get that out in the open now and address that in any way that you see fit, because I don't want, frankly, to come up next week and be another reason why something might get delayed, so.
Do you want to do that right now?
Well, I, I don't want to do it next week, if it's.
Do you want to do it in this session? Or do you want to file it in writing?
What is the conflict?
I'm just, I just, I'm just saying, if anybody has an issue, I'm here to discuss it.
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to say that from my point of view, it, it, I'll say, in my business experience, there are many times when competitors go into business for themselves, you know, looking for the, you know, looking for business from the, you know, from the places where they were getting business in their own firm. The fact that there are many, many members of the, in my opinion, of the Conservation Law Foundation that are partners in, in Serafix, doesn't trouble me as much as it might, you know, might trouble others, because you are basically taking a position against them and representing our interests. And I would think that because of their knowledge of how the CLF operates, that would put us in better shape. It just, but that's just my opinion.
What is the conflict?
Well, just a minute, Jill. The, the other thing you usually do, if you, as the consultant here, and as the person we have hired to work with the collaborative, have any relationships, let's say, so to speak, with a law firm that the county wishes to hire. speak, with a law firm that the county wishes to hire, then you would disclose that in writing to the appropriate person in the county who I believe would be the county clerk. Isn't that usually where disclosures are filed? So, you would disclose whatever relationship you either had or have currently with any principal in the firm or with the firm itself or any, any, whether it's a financial interest, particularly if it were a financial interest, you would need to disclose that. Or if you could say you had a financial interest at some point, but you don't anymore, or you never had a financial interest in it, nor, am I saying all this right? Here's county, county...
I believe, I believe what you said in the paper, it didn't occur to you because...
Anytime that your, that a county or a municipal agency or state agency is hiring someone, they have to make sure that there are no conflicts of interest. And usually, it's happened numerous times with me in both my work in Plymouth and in Fallon. We have a board member whose brother was a principal in a firm that the town was doing business with. He had no financial interest, but he had to write a letter of disclosure that that was the relationship. And, and so, I would assume that that would be the same with you. If you be the person who is going to be working directly with the firm, had any kind of a relationship with the firm, then you just file a disclosure to your, to your appointing authority, which would be the county commissioners, because we appoint you as the consultant.
That's fine.
Now, and I would suggest...
I did, I did because I don't think those circumstances exist, but I'm happy to disclose my non-relationship with Anderson Krieger.
Well, if you don't have any relationship with them, then there's nothing to disclose.
I'm just saying, but I just want to, you know, I don't want this to become an issue next Wednesday where somebody says there's, there's an issue where...
What has been brought forward as a conflict of interest, may I ask? Because I totally have no idea.
What I, the word about it came from Patrick Cassidy.
I would, I'm not going to get in the middle of this as a reporter, but I'd suggest to somebody talk to the state ethics folks in the...
Let me suggest, yeah. I think that, you know, without giving any advice, because I haven't been asked to give any advice, but any person who is a, either a special county employee or a county employee is subject to Chapter 268A, which is the Conflict of Interest law. And that requires that if you come within either of the definitions, you're either a county employee or a special county employee, that the procedures that are in the statute apply. And you may either, you, you may petition the State Ethics Commission for an opinion and you set forth the circumstances under which, whatever they are, I don't know, whatever they are, and that's, that's the employee's option. The employee's not required to do it, but if the employee does not do it and it is determined subsequently that there is a conflict, then the employee's subject to prosecution. And so, that's, it's the statute, it's 268A. And, and, and Pat is right. One of the ways in which a situation which comes under the terms of the statute can be cured is by disclosure. And you file with the appointing authority a, a, a list with the circumstances, whatever they are.
The question, I thought, that had to do with, I mean, Slavington?
I'm sorry.
There was a, there was a member of Serafix who was, who was a general counsel for the Cape...
No, no, there's a, there's a person at Serafix named Steve Barrington who's a contract employee with, with Anderson Krieger and does a day or two of work a week. According to Bill A., he was the manager partner of the agency. Steve and I are co, are consultants to Serafix individually. It's been alluded to the fact that somehow that represents a conflict. I don't believe that it does. I didn't think that it did, so it didn't, it didn't become an issue. If people get some comfort in the fact that I write a formal disclosure letter for that, I'm happy to do that, but, you know, it didn't...
That's entirely up to you.
I understand that. I just didn't see it as a, a relevant issue, so it wasn't done, but since apparently no action's been taken to employ Anderson Krieger, no current conflict could possibly exist, so I'll see what the issue is. But I didn't want it to come up next week and then have it be a delay.
Any, any other comments from Andy?
Your meeting next Wednesday?
Mm-hmm. We don't have a time yet.
So, anyway, well, this will be a formal agenda. You know, we'll present a recommendation to you and it'll be a formal agenda for action, is my understanding.
Yes, in the afternoon.
Okay.
I knew it was in the afternoon. I just don't exactly know what the starting time is. What is your availability in terms of time?
I'll make myself available, whatever you mean.
Make yourself available? Okay. We will too.
Oh, before we leave the whole subject of wastewater, we have this thing Friday down at your Danilo in Orleans. Are you attending that?
I'm planning on...
I have never received an invitation, but I won't be able to go anyway. I'll be heading to a wedding.
I never received an invitation either. I'm planning on going.
I didn't either, but I noticed on the, on the flyer it said...
Yes, I did.
Public welcome. And I happened to see Dr. Brian House last night, and I asked him if he was going, and he said he didn't receive an invitation.
No, I didn't receive an invitation. I assume as a member of the public, I'm welcome.
Well, I'm planning to go.
Lastly, I got a personal invitation from Serafix.
Oh, that's very nice.
I did not.
And on that invitation, both of you were invited.
I would, I would just like to, since we are on wastewater, just also state that I did have a meeting with the peer review board of Orleans of the wastewater situation with Brian House and Andy last week. And what seemed clear to, what came out of this is as they, they tried to go point by point over different issues that they had on different questions, it was clear that they did not have all of the information. They've been carrying this for two years, and they are basing their numbers on, on information that they don't have, they don't have at all. So, they don't have all of the numbers. They don't have all of this, and they're saying, how do we get this number for the TMDL? And that is with the towns now. The university has given us all. He says, you paid for it? You have it. It has been given to your towns. The towns say, no. So...
The towns say or this group say?
The towns...
Group said they couldn't get it from the town.
They said that they did not get it from the town, that the town says they don't know, you know, they don't know anything about it. So, they have not been given the information. They're holding people with this assumption that the, that the science is wrong, where they don't have all of the science. And when it was being discussed, you could see very clearly that this science has been vetted. There has been much more going on than what they were assuming. It has been tested, you know, three different ways. And it was clear to me that Brian House has done everything he can to have these numbers be very conservative, to save people money, to try to find anywhere where natural occurrences happen that, to save people money that they don't have to go to an extreme there. So, that came out of it and also came out of it where they felt that the TMDLs changed in Pleasant Bay possibly because of the breach that happened two years ago, and he said, I predicted that in those writings. I have supported that, and if you wanted to go and take a look at that, I am in support of that. I said to them, I am in support of that as long as it doesn't hold up everybody else. By you, looking at one block of water that might have changed because of a breach does not mean that every body of water that has been tested across the Cape is in question. And to me, unfortunately, I think that this meeting on Friday is much ado about, not much, because this is something that looked pretty, pretty well-reviewed. It has been reviewed, peer-reviewed three times over anyway by different agencies. I don't know why they're looking at NAS. Is there somebody special? And, and that you could see clearly where these gentlemen is well-intentioned as they are and as, they are being very good citizens, and I, and I like them all very much, and I think that we all came to a good place after this meeting. They do not have all of the accurate information for them to be drawing the conclusions that they came to that has been holding up so much for so many people. So, I think that if people wanted to check this out, it's very possible to do, and they didn't have to be going to having the congressman, the NAS coming up here.
Since, since I do intend to go, go on Friday, I would like at this point to know that we have a commitment by all three of us to the symposium that we propose.
We absolutely have, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I'd like, I'd like us to make sure that we're, that we're clear that we have proposed a symposium which, to which we have suggested that members of the NAS could come and that at that symposium, the kinds of things that they're talking about, we know would be on the table to review.
Absolutely.
And, and to that end, I'm really looking forward, you know, to Friday and to hear from, you know, Steve Parker, who's coming to, who's the, the person in charge of that, to see what he would speak to in terms of what NAS sees in all of this, you know, where they fit into this whole picture.
Well, when we had that very informal discussion with them, they felt that what we were doing was exactly right, and they, we have communication with them, seeing how they can assist us in that symposium. So, it's not as though we have left them out or we ignored that.
So, anyway, so we go down there with, you know, being unified in the fact that we are supportive of a symposium, which would involve and include members of the public and the scientific community...
That's right.
...to have what I would call a legitimate discussion of the application of the facts.
Yes, absolutely supportive. Can I, can we just say that we will open the meeting at 1:00 next, next Wednesday and have on the 1:00, 1:00 AM? 1:00 PM, the first subject will be wastewater, so that everybody can move on with their business and that there's certainty. So, 1:00?
Okay.
You might mention that again, but next week, we're meeting at 1:00.
1:00 next week. Okay, that's the end of the wastewater discussion, so we're going to move on to your, John, did you come for any particular reason? Did you want to make any public comments? Thanks, Andy. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for asking. You know, I'm here to serve.
Okay. Did you want to report?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I reported on that, and I also just wanted to state that I was at the regional meeting of the lower Cape towns this morning. They asked that I come, and the commission was there to report on their assessing study that they are doing an assessing study. And this is a Cape-wide assessing study because 15 towns have showed now interest into see how we could come up with some sort of standardization. This does not mean that the county is taking over assessing. It's just looking at the appropriate economies of scale and where some costs can be streamlined for the towns where it comes to standardized in the assessing, in their response to DOR, and DOR is involved in some of this. So, they're all very pleased. They're all very happy with our support and actually the support through, our support through the commission. And they also asked for an update on what was going on with NSTAR, and I invited them to, we will have a, we did have our NSTAR meeting last week. The NSTAR people did put in a presentation as to what their vegetation management strategies are. In what we are doing in these ad hoc, in this ad hoc meeting is we're really getting as much information on the table so that we can then address it, you know, through the facts and not through emotions. Because undoubtedly, NSTAR will resume its practice next year, and it is now being seen that, you know, NSTAR is not the only person or the only entity that's putting, degrading, that could be possibly degrading our waters and maybe they're one of the least. So, the Department of Agriculture will be speaking and presenting how they go about coming up with these regulations, what their procedures are, the, and the regulations going forward with people who are application, do the applications of the pesticides and everything. So, this will be a very informative meeting, and we are also going to be calling in the Cape Cod Commission to be talking about, you know, water flow and just because something is put here doesn't mean that that, that it just stays there. Where, where just, you know, underground water flow in the directions and giving us all the...
When is it going to meet now?
So, we are meeting a week from Friday, which I believe is November 5th at 9:00. And one meeting was here at 11:12. The last meeting was in the Assembly of Delegates. I suggest that anybody who would like to attend, check the barnstablecounty.org website for where it will be held. I will say that the public is invited. They are invited to participate because this is a working group. I do give the public like five or 10 minutes at the end to ask any questions or bring up any concerns they have. Some people have even forwarded us information that they thought would be relevant. I have made sure that Karen, you know, gets that out to every member that's on the working team. But the public is not really a participant in this. They can sit and listen and give us, you know, comment at the end if they have something that they want to point out. But it's not a question-answer and trying to get something out because we're really trying to resolve something here.
Did NSTAR speak about the fences and gates issue?
Yes, they did speak about the fences and gates issue, and lo and behold, the majority of people actually like the fences and gates because, number one, they're pretty. They've done them in wood. They've, they've made them very Cape-compatible. And number two, they have addressed anybody's, any of Butters' concerns, and there's only been a couple, and those were people who liked to walk the path and they had trouble getting through. So, they've widened like access like a couple of feet on either side so people could walk through, but, you know, you couldn't get like a dirt bike through or you couldn't bring your couch through to dump it somewhere in the national seashore or wherever. Because they have been clearing out refrigerators. They have a long list of all of the clearing of the dumping that has gone in there, and they've done that with no charge because it's just, you know, it would take more aggravation to go to the towns and say, you've got these things there than them pulling it out. But on the whole, once people understand why it's, why they're there, they're, they're actually appreciative because it does keep this type of activity, unwanted activity, off the power lines and up Butters' backyards, of which I happen to be one because I know that there's dirt bikes going back there all the time, so I would, I appreciate any fence that's there. So, so on the whole, everybody was satisfied with that.
Good. I like progress.
Yes. Well, the thing that's good is that people are, that we are all on the same page and we're working in good faith with each other, and I do think that we can work with facts, as I say, as opposed to fear and emotion.
So, is the Department of Agriculture actually considering changing any of their regulations or...
No, I think that they're basically, they're going to discuss what their role is, how their role interacts with, with setting the standards, setting the regulations, and how they interact with, with entities like NSTAR and the like. So, I'm looking forward to hearing their presentation and, and how we can work with them also in the future, so.
And I attended meetings, learning on suicide prevention because there has been a very concerned increase in the number of suicides in the Cape. And so, it was really, it was bringing various people together to really look at actually consolidating resources so that, you know, in terms of the schools, employers, agencies, human service agencies, hospital, trying to bring people together to really sort of take a look at all the resources that are available to people and even bartenders. Interestingly enough, we all know that bartenders do tip training, but there's no reason why we couldn't train bartenders as well. Some people who do, in their lives, have issues with substance abuse or they have legal issues or they have relationship issues.
And alcohol as well, huh?
And alcohol is, is something, right. So, anyway, it was a very, very productive meeting, and I was, yeah. Okay, anything else?
I'm glad you were, I'm glad you were because that's, we're trying to get more people engaged and involved in that, you know, that issue.
Yes. I would say I attended the Coppihets of Wastewater Review Committee meeting in Fallon last night. They are, they will be making their final recommendations to the board of selectmen next Monday in terms of phase, phasing in the wastewater solutions. And they're not, it is not all just big pipe. It's a combination of alternative, it's a combination of a big pipe and also doing demonstration projects for alternatives within the town, onsite alternatives such as the barriers or compost, toilets, things of that sort. And then there was a forum, the Climate Action Team put on a forum called No Time to Waste.
Oh.
Kind of, and so, anyway, it was, there were different people from various segments of the energy group talking about wastewater and how we really, why we really need to educate the community on the issues so that when the solutions are proposed, then people buy into it. Now, the first public forum had about nine people, and there were probably over 100 people left. 100 people last night. So, that was good. So, the community's becoming more and more aware that they need to pay attention, because it will definitely affect their pockets at some point in time. Okay, anything else come before and forward? Maggie, have nothing, a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second. All in favor, say aye. 1:15. Wow. Does that mean we get to go to the airport?